Meeting will come to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of the room in the event of an emergency. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear in the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, we'll be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will give me the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. Michelle, if you would introduce our first matter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First case on the agenda is case number PB 1404-1. Upon the metta request by I-Square LLC for signage approval to install multi-tenant signage on Building 1 on premises 400 Bakers Park in a mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening, Board, ladies and gentlemen. Mike Nolan from I-Square, home address 350 Kings Highway North. We're here tonight to hopefully gain your approval to put signage on our building. We're in the process of wrapping up construction for the next 60 days or so and looking to install signs. We looked at all different kinds of signage, both from an aesthetic standpoint and a functional standpoint. And what you see, what we put in our application, we feel is the best balance of both and will be fitting to set the standard in the I-Square area going forward. Don't know if you had any questions.
Did you receive the comments from HIP?
Yes, we did.
Did you have any response or input or comment?
No, I guess kind of following the thought that we are developing something that, you know, in HIP group, as a lot of people do, look at something solely from an aesthetic standpoint. But signage to us is very functional, has a functional purpose as well. And that, you know, we can build the greatest town center in the world unless our businesses can succeed and thrive in those places and attract and be successful, you know, our town center will be short-lived. So I think, I believe that what we submitted to you is a good balance of both function and aesthetics and should look real good on that building. It's a real nice building. We're not looking to do anything to take away from it.
Are there questions on the boards? Rich, we'll start with you.
Just briefly, you said you did review the comments from HIP. There was a couple of questions in here about total numbers of signs. Do you recall those?
I do, I do.
If you could just address those for me.
Certainly. The quantities were changed on your application prior to submitting it, but it should be two 400 Bakers Park signs, one on the front of the building, one on the rear of the building. Because our parking is in the rear, I think it's important to address the address on both sides of the building. The other one is the multi-tenant marqueesile sign, if you will. And we have three of those, one at each of the primary entrances of the building, two on the front, which I think is shown in your picture, and again, one on the rear from the parking lot entrance. That is the third position that they had asked about.
And each of those signs will be the same size as each other?
Correct.
And the same color scheme?
Yeah, same size, same content. We may change the order depending on which entrance you're coming in, but the content will essentially be the same.
And with regard to their comments, has there been any dialogue between you and them with regard to the comments they've made?
Not since receiving the comments. We haven't, we just got them yesterday, but I did look them over and again, we considered the alternatives and things that were presented, but still feel that our original plan really best meets our needs.
Okay, thank you.
Ray?
Mr. Nolan, I asked you at the workshop, is there anything from Edward Jones that stipulates how their look has to be corporate-wide?
Um, I don't, I mean, they have approved signage that they're corporate, you know, that they supply when they're moving into a new space. They have an agent that pursues spaces for them and that agent is who we work through. When we got to the signage point, they referred us to their standard signage. You know, they have a website and a page for that where they have all the different options that they've installed in different places. They had requested that we use the most common, which is the primary white facelit channel letter sign as proposed. They actually proposed to have a little bit larger. We shrunk them down just a little bit to keep it in proportion with the other signs going on the building. I'm not sure.
Is there any wiggle room in that, Mr. Nolan, with what they've said? Or have they been adamant contractually? Just curious.
Uh, they haven't been overly adamant. I mean, it was a two-way conversation. We discussed what their looks were. We went out, we sought out a few other Edward Jones locations. This is the same signage that we, on the one in Ridge Road in Grease. And that was a location that we honed in on because it looks really nice on the building there. It's against a brick-faced building and very common, so we didn't, there wasn't a big conversation. We went back and forth two or three times more about the size than the style of lettering because we really do feel it's appropriate as high as they're placed on the building.
Okay, thank you.
Move to Bernie.
Hi, Mr. Nolan. A question for you. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. So this package that we received, the first sign is the one called the Market that's on the side of the building.
Yes.
The next sign is the I-Square. The next one, you crossed off a couple and I wasn't sure. Are you going with the black lettering on the next page?
Right. On the one page, I'm not sure if I crossed out the Edward Jones one.
No.
Let me, actually, I'm going to walk over if it's... Yeah, that one's for Edward Jones. This page only refers to Edward Jones. The other page has the corrected fonts for these two.
Okay, so this one is the same as this one and then this one is the black lettering now? So there isn't a view that shows you what it would look like, like this, with what your proposed changes are?
I may have one subsequently from that, but yes.
I'm looking at this page where it shows what it's going to look like. I didn't see anything that showed what the changes.
Essentially, it would look exactly the same except, see this font here?
Yep.
This is the font we went with on the following page right here. See that? So it's more squared-out letters versus this is...
I just interrupt for a minute. Usually the J's here to hand out the handheld mic. We'd prefer if everyone could stay on microphone so that it gets into the public record, but I apologize.
No problem. I'm sorry.
I know. I'm sorry for the awkwardness, but I understand that this drawing, the only thing that's represented on this drawing that's correct is the Edward Jones in the middle, that the others are alternate signs contained within the rest of this package.
That is correct.
So are we going to wait for the public hearing to discuss options or?
Do we have a public hearing?
Technically, we are not required to have a public hearing in regards of signage. This is just for recommendation to the director to approve the sign, but we did advertise it as such, so therefore we will be having a public hearing.
Correct.
Correct.
So is it appropriate?
Oh, we're here, I mean, I was going to let Greg do this in a little bit, but maybe this is, now is a good time since you brought it up. But we're just here in an advisory standpoint to the director whether we want to approve or disapprove or modify the signage.
So then I guess this is the proper time. So since I've been on the board, we have consistently followed the guidelines and not approved backlit signs. The point I wanted to make was, in my opinion, when I look at this, and it's just my opinion and how I feel, I don't think the Edward Jones is correct, but I really truly think that the I-Square is a pretty classy sign that draws attention to, not this as a business, but this as a iconic place that you go in Arundic quite. So I'm kind of torn because we have consistently, since I've been here, rejected any backlit signs. But I'm wondering, since it is a guideline, I fully believe, I fully understand everything that was in the HIP letter and I also agree that I don't think Edward Jones should be backlit. But I think the I-Square, maybe we want to give some consideration, just from the way I feel looking at it. That's all I wanted to share.
Now, you weren't here when we approved the LD sign, but we did approve LDs with the internally lit. And it's a guideline to the signage, it's not a regulation, and we've taken in the past the input of the public and the applicant and the HIP organization and measured that against our own opinion and then the applicant's input and measured our response based on that input.
Right. So when I saw this kind of darkened picture, I thought that was a great way to show what it's going to look like, what it's going to draw people's attention to at night. And then I went back and looked at the plans. I don't think the other buildings that are going up are going to block that either, from what I saw. Mr. Nolan, could you comment on that? Would this still be visible even with...
We expect to. When we build the building at the lot, what would be on the southwest corner, it'll eclipse a little bit of that view as you're coming eastbound on Titus, but you're still going to be look up. Bakers Park is really wide right away with the sidewalks, so yes, I still believe, at least the I-Square one, as you get further down the building because of the contours of the face, I think you might lose a little bit down toward the conference center end. But no, I do believe you'll be able to see that and we're hoping that banner, the Market banner, is also visible like that.
So I just wanted to share, I fully support what HIP wrote because we've always supported the guidelines. But then again, guidelines are guidelines, not code. And I think in this case, we might want to consider approving the I-Square. I wouldn't like to approve the Edward Jones if that's possible, but I don't know if that's a conflict, but just my opinion from looking at it. That's it.
Mary?
Well, from what I...
Welcome, by the way.
Thank you. After going through all this, I really approve of what he wants to do. I can see no problem with it personally.
Thank you. Michael?
I'm okay with the presentation. Really, it's, I can understand what you're saying, Bernie, but I don't see that to be such an anomaly.
Mr. Chairman, I have one additional question. So we're serving in an advisory position now. When future buildings at this project go up and there's signage questions and instead of just one Edward Jones, we have a building sitting on Titus Avenue that has six different tenants that want six different lit signs, are we going to be serving in an advisory capacity at that time so we can address each of them?
Yes, this district is unique in that all signs have to come before the planning board for recommendation for approval by the Director of Development Services. I mean, I would say that that is one bit of thing that you said, there is a good point. And I guess, Mike, have you thought about, I mean, this being a guideline or a master plan, if you will, for future buildings? I mean, these concepts, do you think will carry through consistently?
I do. I mean, nationals aren't really our attraction, you know, like Edward Jones and ones that have. And that's really where you get into that style of sign, is the national ones that want them to look the same from town to town, city to city, so they get the brand recognition. But as we go up closer toward Titus, specifically on yours, your question was, we see those not as multi-tenant buildings and certainly if they are not multinational chain-style businesses, we don't want to, you know, pollute up Titus with a bunch of signs that look hodgepodge. As we build each building, you know, we look at it with a pretty critical eye ourselves and understand what we want this development to look like over time. But we do intend on coming back at each building. I believe that's the requirement. But furthermore, we also plan on having input and some say as we revisit those guidelines going forward, that's been a topic of discussion, to go through them and make sure they're relevant and in line with the development as we see it coming to be today.
If there's no more comments from the board, I'd like to open up to public input.
Good evening. My name is Ann Burns. I live at 199 Bellhurst Drive and I'm here representing the HIP group, helping our Arundic quite plan for progress. And we want to thank the Nolans for the thought that they have put into the signs. We just had a couple of questions which we raised. I mean, most of the signs are incredibly artistic, aesthetically pleasing, and they really fit with the vintage feel of what the construction is there. We still do question the Edward Jones sign comparing to West Ridge Road in Grease, that's a C commercial district. This is not. And to echo Mr. Plukas' concerns, we also are concerned with what's going to happen going forward. We don't know if this board will all be the same. I mean, we've had good experience with this current board. We've had at least 25 signs, at least, come before all of you and including Chase Bank, which stood here and told us that, no, they would do this in Pittsburgh, but not in Arundic quite. We told them we have design guidelines, so we got a unique sign that fits that district that's exterior lit. So we also have the same concerns. We're concerned that the I-Square sign that's going to go on Building 1 would also be put on the Titus side too. So how many buildings is that I-Square sign going to be put on? I sent the examples yesterday, some other ideas from major cities with major commercial developments that use the exterior lit. So, you know, in our opinion, you know, we believe it's important that the planning board uphold the exterior lit requirement just because of the aesthetic and the pedestrian benefits. This piece, the Titus piece of this district, is a compact neighborhood and we feel that it needs to be in line with the design guidelines that we've all worked so hard to develop and to implement the last few years. I think that's everything I had. We would just ask for your consideration in that regard and thank you.
Can I ask a question of your opinion? I mean, there are backlit signs and then there are internally lit signs. I-Square sign and Edward Jones signs are basically the same conceptually signs. I mean, one's a low-key one.
Right, and I would like both of them to be exterior lit. That's what we...
And then the other one is backlit, and that is acceptable to HIP or not?
Well, the halo sign, those are included in the design guidelines. The halo lit signs, which would be the conference center sign, that's allowed by the design guidelines. Yep, that was developed by the zoning commission that came together to come up with the zoning code and the design guidelines, together with the consultant that the town paid $60,000 of our wonderful taxpayer money to come up with the master plan for the district. So the halo lighting is allowed, but interior lit signs are not allowed.
So your opinion would be that, I mean, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but if they were all halo lit, then you would be happy with that?
I wouldn't be happy. I would, I'd like some variety. I like the exterior lit. I think it looks classy. And that's why I spent time over the weekend pulling together some more ideas for everyone because I think there's a possibility there to make it, get the aesthetic that we're looking for and the artistic detail, but have it meet the guidelines as well. I mean, I don't, we don't, as a group, we don't want the signs to all look like Stutz and Plaza. I mean, that's, everything's all the same and that's not the look we're looking for either. So I guess to answer your question, if everything looks the same, then that's not good either. But if it fits the guidelines, you know, having something exterior lit in that mix would be appropriate. Do you have any other questions? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Leslie DeCesar, 160 Somershire Drive. I just, as an employee of I-Square and as a resident and a former member of HIP, I just want to give some input. When Mike first brought to the thought of putting the I-Square and the Edward Jones in this type of signage, my first instinct was, you know, let's take a look at other options. And so what I did was, what I do lately now, ever since I started I-Square, I look at every single building that I drive by now. Half the time, I'm surprised I haven't driven off the road, but I look at the signage, I look at the architecture, I look at the lighting. I look at everything now. And when he proposed these first, I took a look, I drove down Monroe Avenue in Pittsburgh and too much to my surprise, because I always had this idea that internally lit signage was a bad thing, I looked and I saw what was up on Monroe Avenue at Clover, excuse me, at Clover and Monroe Avenue. And I don't know if you're familiar with the building I'm talking about. It's the Park Avenue Bike Shop is there, Starbucks is there. They all have these same signage and it looks wonderful. It doesn't look cheap. It looks elegant. So when you talk about internally lit signs, my first thought is these huge signs, these big square signs that look commercial and bright and ugly. We're talking about these letters that, you know, it's almost like mincing words when it's halo lit or internally lit. As far as when you look at the signage, it looks nice and I would recommend that anybody look at what else is on the buildings in other towns and these types of signs are not as bad as they're made out to be. Thank you.
I mean, I guess I do kind of agree that the big box sign, which is like a two-foot by three-foot box that just has some colored letters painted on white lexanis, I think more the spirit of what we're trying to eliminate. But I mean, you are correct also HIP that we have, you know, really bent some arms to get other signage and I guess, you know, we're somewhat reevaluating that as applicants like LDs have come along and things, but... What other comments do we have? Any other applicant questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to speak in regards to this? Seeing none, close the public input portion.
Can we ask more questions or?
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan, if I... So is the Edward Jones a situation that it has to be that way? Is there a stipulation in the lease or something like that?
No, I don't think there's a stipulation in their lease. I think their signs have to be approved by the landlord and, you know, my permission's based on what you guys would say. But I do, I do feel strongly that that sign is important to them. They're moving from Titus Avenue to almost a block off of Titus to keep their recognition, especially being on the second floor. I think for their business model and for the gentleman and, you know, people, employees that work there, I think it is important to support their business and I don't think it's, it's not a bad-looking sign. When we saw this on a very similar colored brick building, it looks really nice with the white facing on the letters. I'd also agree with Peter, I think the, with Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, the thought of interior lit signs really is a lot about based, the fluorescent interior lit signs that are basically plastic lit up, that, you know, really, we would never want that in I-Square or anything of the sort. And when I think of interior lit signs that are unattractive, that's really where I go. The channel letters are, can really be nice.
Bernie, one thing, you can't really say no to Edward Jones and yes to I-Square because they're saying the same thing.
That was a question I was just going to ask, so...
You know, I mean, you, I don't want to say hypocritical, but I mean, it's very contradictory to tell one you can have the sign that's exactly like the other one and one can have it, one can't. I mean...
So is it feasible that there's going to be potentially two other signs next to it at some point in time, or there could be?
No, this building is completely occupied, so this is all, this is the full extent of the signage.
So the other folks have not requested signs of that nature?
Well, there are signs. There's a roster sign that you have for the tenants that are the lower level.
For all the first-floor tenants and there's no more available space. The second floor is completely occupied between I-Square, Edward Jones, and the conference center. There's no other available space.
Nobody else is going to make a request to put...
No, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want them to. It wouldn't fit in with the rest of the style.
Are they going to be on 24 hours or do they go off at a certain time too?
Um, we talked about that briefly at the workshop. I'm, we are a little unclear if there's a town rule to it. We know, we believe Wegmans, a lot of the Plaza are lit throughout the night. We don't really have a need. None of our businesses will be open that time of day. So to, you know, turn it off at 2:00 in the morning is probably the more prudent path, you know, and...
You anticipate putting a timer on the signs?
Yes. Yeah, there will be a contact to turn them on with, so based on the light, the darkness, and then timer to turn them off.
I mean, me, I don't mind the internally lit, single-letter lights, lighted signs. I think that they don't let off a ton of light. That's my opinion.
Mr. Nolan, do you have any idea if you're going to have a problem with the tenants and the apartments behind you? With this lighting at night?
I don't expect to. They would, the signs won't put out nearly the lighting. The streetlights do. There's streetlights down both Stranahan along the back and up Bakers Park in front of these signs. They're going to produce a lot more lumens of lights than these signs will.
All right. Any more questions of the applicant?
I do have. Mr. Nolan, you've spoken about, it's important to have a sign on that building. And we're moving from main thoroughfare to what is now not a main thoroughfare. So I'm struggling to understand, I guess, and maybe you could explain to me business-wise, how a sign is going to attract people off the main thoroughfare, off the main thoroughfare, if you will.
I think, I'm not sure so much off, but signage is about, is about views. Number of times you see something that, you know, that creates brand recognition and really that's what it is.
Seven times according to...
Just seven times? Okay, good. I can't wait till everybody in town sees my sign seven times. But the, it's about reinforcing that brand, reinforcing what's in I-Square, attracting people to come in and check things out. Really, it's all it is. A sign is an invitation into our development and, you know, hopefully, once they get there, we, our service and our offerings bring them back.
I think, I'd also like to say, what you have done, what I've seen so far, is positively elegant. I like what you've done. I just question that sign off. elegant. I like what you've done. I just question that sign off. What we hope to be a main thoroughfare down the road, you know, as you drive business through that particular area. It's going to be not just Edward Jones, not just I Square. It'll be a variety of things that do it, in my mind, at least.
Right. And I think each building, you know, the, the stage building across the street will likely only have one sign on it in a different style that will go with the stage and, you know, and so everything will vary just a little bit in what you're seeing. And we want that, like Anne from HIP mentioned, some variety is healthy. We don't want it to look like a hodgepodge of different things on the building, but as we move our way around the development, certain, some, some differences.
Okay. Thank you, by the way.
Greg, maybe you could just introduce a little bit about guidelines?
Sure, yeah. If it's, you know, maybe helpful to the board to kind of explain the difference between what, what the design guidelines are and then kind of what, what the code requires. So, so there are these design guidelines which were, which were enacted, I think, back in, in 2003, which have this, this recommendation that, that they eliminate interior lit signs. And how that gets carried forward into the zoning code, which was last updated regarding signs in 2005, there's a table, I think it's, it's Table D, and it talks about the specific signs per district. And in this district, the mixed-use commercial district, interior illuminated signs are not prohibited. What they are subject to is they're subject to review by this board and issuance of a sign permit by Nick Weatherby as a director for Development Services. So there's, the code could have said that internal illuminated signs in this district would be prohibited if it wanted to, you know, fully carry forward what was in the design guidelines. It chose not to do that and instead made it subject to review by this board. So just, if, if that helps explain, you know, kind of what the design guidelines said and kind of what the code says and kind of this board's function as to providing its comment and its review to, to Nick, who will be the ultimate person that'll issue, you know, the sign permit, taking into consideration the comments here at the public hearing and any, you know, reviewer comments that the board passes along.
I guess my opinion is that, I, I understand, I mean, I'd like to see this first building be as successful as possible. And I guess I would discourage in the future, or encourage, I should say, a positive side, as many externally lit signs as we could, especially along Titus Avenue. I think we've been pretty steadfast in that Titus Avenue corridor, and I think these buildings are, this building will be further back where some additional signage oomph is probably not warrant, not unwarranted here. So using the double negative, I don't like, but, you know, so I guess I'm looking to a little lenience. I, my opinion is a little more lenient in this matter than we will be along Titus Avenue in the future.
That sounds fair.
That would be my opinion. And I guess what we're doing, oh, we, you know, this is a type two action, so there's no seeker response, motion required.
Correct. And there, and there's actually no, as you had indicated before, Mr. Chairman, no public hearing required. It's, it sounds like maybe it was the custom of the board, you know, in the past to, to actually notice this and have a public hearing and allow the public to comment. And, and that's fine. There's just, you know, not required to, to hold a public hearing at all. What you're just required to do is review the sign application that's, that's been submitted and, you know, provide your comments to, to Nick, so.
So there's not even a blank for this on the second page, but we're, I guess the motion would be to recommend the signage as proposed.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes. Or I just said it and I made the motion. And I'm looking for a second either way.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Recommendation is made to the director to approve the signage. Thank you for your continued investment in Arundicway.
Thank you.
Next time we'll be having ice cream. Believe we need a motion to remove from the table item from the table?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle, if you would introduce the case?
Case number PB 1403-3. Upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering acting as agent for CDE Partners LLC for preliminary final site plan approval and to determine seeker lead agent to construct a plus or minus 2,500 square foot Sonic restaurant with site-related improvements on premises 999 Eastridge Road, the Depot Plaza, in an manufacturing district.
Let me just start, but just so everyone's aware, you're lead agent now. As, on this, there's no motion that's necessary, so as, pertaining to seeker.
Could you explain to Mr. Chairman for everybody?
Maybe Greg would be better to explain it than that.
Sure. So this was, what we decided to do here with this application, because the, the applicant needs multiple approvals from, from this board, from the zoning board of appeals, and also the town board, is to do a coordinated seeker review. So the planning board, back in March, I believe, passed a, passed a motion or notice to declare themselves lead agency. And what that did is that started the seeker process, where the planning board sent out notices to all the other involved agencies, asking if they objected to the planning board being the lead agency. And they received responses from both the zoning board of appeals and the town board not objecting. And, and there were, there were no other objections that were received from any of the other involved agencies. So what seeker says is after 30 days from when that notice is sent out, if nobody's objected to this board being the lead agency, then congratulations, you are, you are the lead agency for, for purposes of the environmental review.
And Michael, maybe you could just bring us up to speed on where we sit engineering-wise?
Engineering standpoint, we did distribute a comment letter regarding the plans back in March. Unfortunately, I don't think Costage Engineers received that. So we sent that again last week, and we did receive a comment letter back today responding to each of the points in my earlier comment letter. We have not received the plans at this point in time. The responses given to my comments appear to address my concerns expressed in my, my letter in March, though we have not seen the plans. And I think we'd want to do that before recommending any sort of approval. So with the board's discretion tonight, perhaps a contingent approval, if you so desire, would be appropriate, since we have not seen the plans as yet. Not seen the revised plans, I'll say.
Okay. Nick, correct me if I'm wrong. We've already had an open and closed the public hearing, refresh my memory, or Michelle?
Yes, that's correct. We, we had the public hearing at the March meeting. And it was closed at the completion of that public hearing.
And at that time, I think the main pending item was the traffic analysis?
Yep.
Yeah, that was really the only-
Since, Mike Montalta with Costage Engineering. Since we appeared in March 24th, we prepared a traffic impact analysis and submitted that to Monroe County DOT. Monroe County DOT reviewed that. We also had a meeting with town staff and town engineer to review the findings of the traffic report. Based on that meeting, pardon me, the county DOT had asked that we also compare a Saturday traffic volume to the weekday traffic volumes. That study has just been completed and turned into Monroe County DOT, and the traffic findings from that are that similar to the PM traffic findings that was in the previous submission in the report. So we did reach out to county DOT, although they have not reviewed it. We believe that the results of that report are consistent with the results of the weekday PM peak that they've already reviewed, of which there were no planning issues that, you know, came out of that. There was no necessar, need to change signal timing, queuing, et cetera. I believe the conclusion also that was reached in the, in both reports is that the Sonic development as being proposed provides ample stacking, review of 27 different locations for McDonald's and Dairy Queen's represent that a 95 percentile. For an operation that size, that 12 queuing spaces is adequate. We're providing 13, so they felt that that was even a better level of comfort, that there would never be a, a traffic issue backing up onto Ridge Road. I think, you know, we've, Fran has acknowledged that, you know, when it first opens up, there will be, you know, police presence or whatever until people understand the, the traffic circulation. But it doesn't appear through the studies that there's going to be any issues associated with traffic. And there is the agreement that the plaza owner is, will be entering into with county DOT for any other intersection improvements. But those don't actually address the main signalized intersection because there's already one there. If there really was a change there, it would be signal timing.
Right. And just for the board's benefit also, I mean, generally, if there are a few engineering items, I mean, we deal with the planning issues. The engineering is generally left to the engineers, and we have traditionally in the past given preliminary or end or final approval when there's still being a few engineering issues that might be left open. But, I mean, you're talking more connections of lines and-
There were some scribe errors, some note cleanup. There really didn't appear to be-
It was more technical?
Yeah. They're, they're, they're what I would consider to be technical in nature. We have no exception with any of the comments as raised by the towns engineer. Some of them are a matter of-
Like you're asking them to change a curb cut or move, close an entrance, or?
Yeah, they're more nitty-gritty engineering details. I'd imagine you could look at the plan and maybe not pick up on some of the things that I would look for. But as Mike has indicated there, some of them are just kind of cleanup issues. Some of them are engineering issues to kind of improve the performance of landscaping and, and the overall constructibility of the project. I don't think there is any planning issues per se that I had commented on.
Still have to wait. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just for the sake of people that weren't at the workshop, the county requested that you do a actual live traffic count on a Saturday, and you actually did that in the last couple of weeks. As a matter of fact, as a result of that meeting, SRF associates worked with Brent Penn Warden. TY Lynn had already done a study on a Saturday. SRF associates got the data from TY Lynn. They presented it to Brent. Brent looked at it to make sure that the data was still valid. And then that was used for, so it was a ongoing dialogue back and forth between county DOT and SRF associates, primarily because there was a holiday weekend in there as well. So they wanted to make sure that- But your, your analysis concludes that the Saturday peak traffic is no different than an evening traffic? But the intersection operates at a level of service B overall. During the weekday, there's like an 11.6 second delay. And in, on a Saturday afternoon, it's a 16 second delay overall for that intersection. So it's, for all intents and purposes-
And a B is, correct me if I'm wrong, pretty good for-
Yes.
Very good, right?
That's the, that's the overall intersection level is B, yes. And that is quite good, you know.
You hope it degrades a bit based on-
Yeah. Yeah. You hope that you get enough traffic. There are some delays on some of the legs, but overall, the intersection, you know, functions at a B PM peak and Saturday afternoon peak. And people are going to be full from visiting the restaurant at that point, so they'll be content. Exactly. They won't be in a hurry to leave. You still need, Mr. Chairman, to, as a condition of approval, need the rubber stamp of DOT. Is that correct, Monroe County DOT? As we had to submit something to them for-
They already have, well, correct, I mean, just curious.
Well, and I, I think, is that letter in their, in their packet, the county, when the county responded to the correspondence from the planning board to become lead agent, they responded saying they had no issue being, the planning board being the lead agent. And as I understand, those are, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a binary question. Either you approve or you don't approve, even though in that article, I mean, in their letter, they reference if they could take into account the county DOT's comments, but that the applicant has.
They've already, they've also agreed to enter into that agreement with the county if any traffic improvements are necessary in the future, that they would be willing to do so.
Yep. And that's why we had that, that's why we had that meeting.
Yeah, no, I know, right, yeah.
We don't need-
There is no county DOT permits associated with this project.
Right. But I just want to make sure that we cover all bases.
The county, to some extent, has asked for extraordinary information on the part of this applicant, which they've been willing to provide.
Again, I just want to-
No, I understand. I understand.
Well put.
So it's, I mean, are there any other questions of the applicant? I believe we need, did we go through, where's my packet on this?
We did seeker, didn't we, not? On this particular-
No, I don't believe we did.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we would typically have distributed our recommendations for fulfillment of parts two and three of the seeker form-
Yes.
Earlier. However, in light of the ongoing traffic study, that was not a possibility. I did bring for your consideration, parts two and three filled out with our suggestion. If, if I may pass them out at this point, then?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
In, in general, we are suggesting to the planning board to issue a negative declaration in consideration that the project is located along an existing commercial corridor, and it, the use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area. While additional approvals are necessary from the town, we feel that there's no significant impact as a result of this action. A few of the items that did come up along the way to look a little bit further, one was the historic and archaeological resources, is this area is located in an archaeologically sensitive area. However, the applicant has indicated that the area was previously disturbed probably several times, and so we're probably not going to encounter any undisturbed artifacts in this area. In addition, we also had some discussions with the state historic preservation office, who indicated since the area has been established for a good period of time, they would not recommend any, any further studies. It would be quite rare that they would recommend any further studies into the developed areas such as Ridge Road. So that was somewhat laid to rest and addressed. There was some areas that in the past, not on the site, but around the site, had various environmental releases, but they're not on the site and were very small in nature and have been successfully cleaned up or remediated. And the last issue was traffic, which you have just discussed. But in general, I, I would say that the applicant has addressed the county DOT's comments, and it was just almost as an afterthought that the idea of looking at PM Saturday analysis was completed, and we have reviewed the information that the applicant's engineer has submitted to the county. We feel that it followed generally accepted practices. And in general, a few of the individual turning movements were a little bit, had a few more cars on Saturday, a few had a few less. But in general, as, as Mike has stated, the overall level of service for the signalized intersection onto Ridge Road remains a level of service B. And so we do not feel that there will be any traffic impacts as a result of this action. While the county is still concluding their review of this, if, if they do come up with any additional comments, we just recommend that the applicant address those as- as they have done in the past. But at this point in time, uh, we've been through at least a couple of round of comments for those and, and the, uh, possibility of anything larger significant is, is rather low.
Okay. And that is the summation of your comments under Part Three, the determination of significance?
Yes, it is.
Does anyone on the board feel it necessary? Would we like to go through these, one through 11 individually, or?
I don't believe that's necessary, Mr. Chairman.
I don't believe so either. Anyone else disagree? Um, I would agree with Mr. Shafran that, uh, this doesn't pose any environmental impact.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, you may.
In regard to case number PB1403-3, upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting as agent for CDE Partners LLC for preliminary final site plan approval to determine seeker lead agent to construct a 2,500 square foot Sonic restaurant with site-related improvements on premises 999 East Ridge Road, Depot Plaza, in an M manufacturing district. I would like to move a negative declaration pertinent to State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Seeing none? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to also say that that's a type-two action?
I believe it's type?
That's an unlisted action, yeah.
And I believe we're looking at preliminary and final site plan approval with the stipulations that?
The DOT?
I don't know if there's any other thing that the DOT has to do. I mean, there's no DOT action, right? There's no, there's no, this is a subject of any DOT?
Right. There's no work in the right way. And as Mike has indicated, they, at this point in time, they don't see a need for any, uh, county DOT permits.
I think the only thing that we have left is that they address the town engineer comments. Correct?
I believe so, yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
You may.
Uh, in case number PB1403-3, upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting as agent for CDE Partners LLC for preliminary and final site plan approval and to determine seeker and lead agent, agent to construct a 2,500 square foot Sonic restaurant with site-related improvements on premises 999 East Ridge Road in an M manufacturing district. I move that we approve, uh, preliminary and final site plans contingent to, upon a review of the revised plans by the town engineer.
Second, Mr. Chairman?
All those in favor, signal aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for investing in Arundicote.
Good luck.
I believe that completes our night's ma, business.
May I move adjournment?
You may.
I do so.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.